Okay. I've been here since the national assembly, we are so many in the house. My name is Tapsi Bantara, Simranestha Kalasati Saino. Um, if I only said that you that you last is the Gisela Sana. And the Gantara is a national entity, it's Gisela. We are in the country, country of the national assembly. The mineral and the services and energy. You can meet your partner man, the oil and the Gisela, okay, I see you all. Not really. All my friends, you are the color of the light, Banta. What do you mean, Rasmati, we're not trying to give a data? Last to hear, you are color of the sun. You tell our one and try to do that. Last to know is the color of the moon. Is it a man, trying to give a mind? Uh, color of the light is color of the Zalmaran. Oh, this is a man, trying to Zalmaran. Last to learn is color of the, uh, Zindula. What do you see, a man, trying to Zindula? Last to color of the Zindula is color of the Bilan Dili. What do you see, a man, trying to Bilan Dili? Like, can't do like, I mean, sorry. But I'm definitely happy, let alone us. Uh, and we still need to the success of the petroleum development, the mineral and the services and energy. We must have still, we are committed to a positive learning energy. We are here because as we produce, uh, legislation of bill by the department of the mineral and the services and energy. We can let them know that I tell what pass the Gisela, the male, the female, and this is in the official learning energy. That I just into my colleague, color of the Zalmaran, to see why are you here and how are you doing to conduct? And he's going to proceed, also we to proceed in that regard. We can meet the Gantara, we can try to do Zalmaran, we can try to do, I tell you, I am here now. Nationally, I stand for you, I have to say to you, I have to tell a moment. Um, good morning, good morning, Tapsi. Reshila, what are you? Um, thank you, Tapsi, for coming. Thank you, Rasmati, I'm still here. As already mentioned, we are here regarding, um, a progress bill from the department of the minerals and energy. I'm still thinking about this here, I can let them know, I tell them, and this is no, but the male, the male, I have to tell, I can dial out the learning energy. The bill is called the upstream petroleum development, uh, bill. Now, this year, if you can, I want to, Tapsi, so we are only in this semester, so I am here, no? The aim of us coming through here is to find some input and you can listen to us about what you want to see, how you understand, and what you want to implement in the bill.
Mama. I think it covers the ten people for the first round.
Okay, if you can relate to one, who made the ring ring song?
One more hand to fill that space.
Call a book or ring way.
I hear that. I know it might be a warm up, some of you might get agitated as you hear other speakers speak and then you will think of something. We are here for you, we'll give you the chance. So, we are going to start by giving us your name. And then you can proceed making your input. Thank you.
Stephen Moari, from Ghana Maroc Community of Muzali. I'm a little bit perturbed by the fact that there are so many potholes around here. I visited Lesotho, Botswana, and I found that they don't have load shedding. They have enough petrol, they don't have water problems, and when I asked them, they said they are getting these things from South Africa. Now, I wondered what could be the problem with us in South Africa? I also asked about NSFAS, the basery that helps students. They don't have problems with those, but in South Africa, they have problems. Now, I've realized that these communities who come to us, they are not telling it like it is, they are not telling the truth. Please, when you come here, tell us the truth of what is actually happening. Thank you. Mezi Afili, why do you miss me? This is a job that I do not put to you, but I was going to give you my name. Do you know what the NSFAS is? NSFAS is a government agency that helps people. But the SOB, the government, doesn't help with this. Why do you want to go to the university? You don't want to go to the university. You don't want to go to the university. Robert, next time, you can tell the government you want to go to the university. You want to go to the university. Thank you.
Stephen, I'm a little bit perturbed by the fact that there are so many potholes around here. I am a little bit perturbed by the fact that there are so many potholes around here. I visited Lesotho, Botswana, and I found that they don't have load shedding. They have enough petrol, they don't have water problems, and when I asked them, they said they are getting these things from South Africa. Now, I wondered what could be the problem with us in South Africa? I also asked about NSFAS, the basery that helps students. They don't have problems with those, but in South Africa, they have problems. Now, I've realized that these communities who come to us, they are not telling it like it is, they are not telling the truth. Please, when you come here, tell us the truth of what is actually happening. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity given. My name is Godfrey Hartley. I'm representing a company by the name of RBKM G Square and Company. Some few years ago, if not mistaken, five years, we were one of the lucky ones to get the petroleum license, a wholesale license in Palabora. My concern is, ever since we got the license, we hardly get business. We are from the mining town in Palabora, if all of you, some of you are aware of that. In our understanding, we thought it will be better for us to have business in Palabora. What's surprising even enough is, not only private sector that it's hard to penetrate in terms of getting business, but also in our government. We tried several times to engage with different stakeholders of government, municipalities, some of them, to see if we can get business. However, business is given to the banks, the private sectors. The private sectors likes of banks whereby we think they will be assisting in terms of financing or maybe giving loans to small businesses like ourselves. So, it is very difficult to have a document, whereas you cannot use that document. No matter how much you try, it's retaped everywhere. So, I'm of a belief that maybe this bill may or should try and change the environment as it is because we are struggling as the black entrepreneurs. Thank you.
Just a sec before the interpretation, we would appreciate as well, as much as we give input, to say whether we agree with the bill or not. The reason why it is important is that we are going to move from here without anybody having said whether they support or not support. Another place is going to support or not support it, and it might have an effect on you because some other people might have had input with regard to supporting the bill or not. So, it is important just to say, with all these things, I think you are talking or no, something to that effect.
I'm Godfrey Hartley, from Palabora. I'm here in Palabora to help people. I'm helping people, I'm helping them to get a license, I'm helping them to buy petroleum. I'm here to help people. I'm here to help them to study. I'm here to help people to learn. Petroleum, I'm here to help them to lend loans, I'm here to help them to buy petroleum. I'm here to help them to buy petroleum. I'm here to help them to buy petroleum.
Firstly, I would like to greet you all. My name is Godfrey Rasyasala, from my own company called Rasyasala Electrical Projects and Enterprise. I would say I can agree with the bill, or I would say I agree with the bill knowing the challenges we have coming to petroleum. I think the bill, or in the bill, I have read the bill, I have read the papers. I think if we can widen the idea of how this bill is going to change the lives of our people, or how it is going to benefit the people of South Africa and the blacks as a whole. So, knowing the challenges that we have environmentally, I cannot say I disagree because we have had these problems before and we cannot stop them now. So, I say I agree with the bill. Thank you.
I'm Godfrey Hartley, from Palabora. I'm here in Palabora to help people. I'm here in Palabora to help people. Thank you very much, Chair.
No, thank you very much, Chair. My name is Isaac Shungwane, from Maravini Village, 123. So, that we have been given three minutes, I will therefore break it into three. The one minute will tell you what exactly is happening and what happened. The second minute, I will tell you about the bill that you are proposing. The third one, I will tell you what needs to happen. Now, in the 4th of May 1990 to the 27th of April 1994, there was a cordesa which selected individual, formed, and go and negotiate with the apartheid government, which today, the people who went there are the ones who are benefiting in the so-called PEE. One of them is the president, Cyril Ramaphosa. Now, what you are doing now is not different from what they did in that time. What you do now is to fill up the halls, expect these people who don't know what exactly is happening to speak on a bill that you even stand there and said you have never discussed it as a committee. Now, let me tell you what needs to happen. You should have clarified these people, how are they going to benefit from this bill? And how is going to impact business and all those kind of things. Now, you know what's happening currently in the world? Is that the Russian government and China are now staying away from using the United States American dollar. They are going to use yuan in terms of trade, in exchange of oil and all other mineral resources. Countries like Saudi Arabia, Egypt, United Arab, Algeria, Argentina, Mexico, and Nigeria, they are now going to form part of BRICS come August this year. We hope that South Africa will also be very progressive in staying away from trading with that United Dollar and move to yuan because progressive countries like China and Russia are leading. Now, your bill, this is what is happening, that's why we are going to reject it and we don't want it as it is. You are saying to us that black people in this country are going to benefit only 10% in the PEE requirements, which is wrong, I will tell you. You further says that the participating of the state in this bill will only be 20% in everything that is going to happen. So, what we are doing, we are reducing state to be just powerless and useless because of this bill. So, what you need to do, given the fact that in South Africa, 80% of black people have been deprived economically. If you are serious and progressive about this bill, is that you shouldn't be saying the state will participate only 20%. You should stick to 50% because you are the owners of the minerals. That's why we say the state must be the custodian of mineral resources of South Africa so that you have full control of what is happening here. The second thing is that when you speak of the PEE, we can't be sitting here and say we are going to give black people 10%. You are very insulting us, you are even taking us back. We want 51% as black people because people who are benefiting in this bill of yours will be white people and the connected few. That's what you are saying to us. So, we want more than that 10% that you are telling us. 51% is what we want. The third thing that you are saying, you want to separate the petroleum from mineral, which is wrong. What you need to do is to keep it the way it is and amend it because as it is, it does not favor the black people of South Africa. Now, how do you deal with the amendment of this bill? Is that you need to establish a state-owned enterprise that will deal with the mineral resources of this country instead of introducing what you call petroleum agents because the petroleum agents that you are talking about will be just a useless security guard that gives permits of who wants to mine, take. But you are not in charge of that, you need to be in charge. The state-owned enterprise must not only give permits. It must be able to explore mines, it must be able to transport, it must be able to trade, and also to enter into serious deals with other companies that wants to mine or use petroleum of this country. Now, how are these people going to benefit from the state-owned enterprise? What you need to do is to establish what the former minister Tito Mboini has been singing about what we call a sovereign wealth fund. When the state is in charge of 50% of what is happening in the mineral sector, the proceeds of that money goes to what we call a state sovereign wealth fund. That money will be used to increase pension. That money will be used to give service delivery. As we speak now, many communities don't have water because you don't have money as a state. But that sovereign wealth fund will be having money because we'll be getting more money from our mineral resources. The Escom that you are complaining about now and say it's not capacitated, does not have money, the money in that sovereign wealth fund will be used to assist Escom instead of increasing prices and say electricity is going to be expensive. The aim of a state enterprise is not to make profit. That's why as government, you must be able to help the state-owned enterprises. Now, you already have PetroSA. That is what you need to be utilizing in capacitating it and helping it as well to perform its function because what we are going to have now, we already have Minister of Electricity. We are going to have a Minister of Petroleum. That's what you are saying to us now, and we don't want that. So, we must put it to you, Chair, that the companies that you are trying to push, which are white monopoly capitalists, they don't even pay tax, those companies, they refuse. They are participating in what we call a profit shifting and base erosion because these companies are multinational companies that are coming from countries outside of South Africa. We must first also tell you that you have reduced a state into a useless body. The only thing to do is give it, the people, companies dealing with petroleum are shared, company share in total. Those are the ones who are largely benefiting from this thing. And that must end one and then capacitate the state to be able to perform its function. Now, lastly, is that I want to put you to this committee as part of the life, life, the deal. You might get effects to actually tell us that since the formation of this act or the establishment of this act, how did it benefit the people of South Africa? Because really, we have not benefited, there is no progress. So, in those bases, Chair, we therefore reject that bill. Thank you very much.
I'm Isaac Shungwane, from Maravini. I'm here in Palabora to help people. I'm here 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 to help people.
No, thanks very much, Chair. My name is Chaba Malaji, residing here at Linyenyewa, 31, the one which is hosting this program, and greetings to everyone. I stand here to reject this bill on the following reasons. The bill is too vague in this area as the so-called local content clause does not have details and we reject it. It must not be the minister's prerogative. Secondly, it must be a law passed by parliament that we must benefit our petroleum resources. Then lastly, we want to request the committee as part of finalizing the bill to get expert to provide sufficient evidence of what has happened since the adoption of the NPRDA in terms of transformation of the mining sector, including all upstream and downstream aspects of the industry. This will help to avoid producing similar outcome with petroleum. I thank you.
I'm Chaba Malaji, from Palabora. I'm here in Palabora to help people. I'm here 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 to help people.
I'm Stephen, Secretary of State. I'm here to greet you. I'm here to help people. 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 Soli onaka vaga la ova mthomwe, isaya ya ya thogomelo abose yala tel. Ifeleleje lo ra ya hona oka rudiseja muruo mo butsumo shchave. Sorero upe la ore yeon, lele itogomel, eva yeongwaya chedidili oru triple BEE iska kwelela. Ekava mthomwe jadi korruption le, eraro yala kamu shurela, vaupe la ore. Iyan lele thogomel edilo jao sana le jaje. Obani edista thogomel, chavasare nakisona ma fililo, segi kweja ose ma tadeeni. Eh itatabeni ya, yame verewo because chavasare nasiliveleji kuduru musho arena. Auru disherje me verewo. So ore alu, chavasare nasaru bejuro malau kaganya aufitisha obemalau. Yeongwaye erine kubope la ore, ekisaliveleji kama raolo. Renalabatuwarina vava olala sot, yalega ele tvali mpopore nalabasot. That's why lebano ngoba vata thomo be, vata thawa olala chedi, ngoba zenchad service delivery. Eh ore abakono uka garu, vaa interpretabala lakaschangan, aona wamo sotoro. Kube la oru leroyala wampe, bakono ukuixa oru eva etamo. Evelo oru bakono waelanale sesunyake ya omogia levo.
Good afternoon. My name is Malatelo Malachi. I am from Greater Leta, but I'm secretary of an organization of Sangho. No, I want to say that we are supporting the bill. But we request you to look into the bill ve- okay? We want you to look at the bill and look at the following items as requested by our community. That government should also have fifty percent so that also the private sector should also have fifty percent, not the ten percent that you're talking about. And that since South Africa is a growing country, you have to be very careful that there should not be corruption like it happened with the triple BB eh triple BEE. Once a country is still going, we request also that this bill, as we support it, should provide work to most of the South Africans who are not working. In short, that's all.
Good morning Chairperson and the committee. And all the visitors that pledged their presence to come and see us today. Eh my name is Pizira Goma from Metz Village, ward number nine. Let me state it on record that I do support the bill, but the following refinements I think are necessary. Because it will be important to have some regulatory framework that governs everything. We can't have an environment whereby there's no legislative governance. We need one, and this is the right platform. But however, the following refinements I think are necessary for the bill to go ahead. One, the state should have a control stake in the whole environment. We shouldn't end up with an environment like Nigeria, where Shell owns the Nigerian oil and sell it to the Nigerian government. A structure like that is very dangerous and should be avoided in South Africa. Two, this bill raises a number of sharp forecasts. One, land ownership is key to the development of petroleum in the country. It's one area that is not being addressed. If, for example, they explore and find oil in one village, for example, who automatically owns that oil? Because the local communities are largely not benefited, multinational corporations move in, milk the oil with the deal ceters with the government, even at the expense of the local communities. Now, the whole notion of land redistribution and land ownership becomes key when you want to address this problem of petroleum and redress of the imbalances of the past. My experience is largely drawn from the Nigerian experience whereby the local communities where they have oil are not benefiting. Eh multinational companies are there milking the Nigerian oil left and right and center, and the local communities are largely disempowered. That is why they steal their own oil and get banned in the process. Now, we need to review that. Ownership should vest and the controlling stake for that matter in the state. However, we need to address the issue of land ownership and localization of ownership of mineral resources. It doesn't make sense whereby you in Limpob, for example, you largely have your traditional authority and traditional leadership and land is generally owned by your traditional leadership whereby your traditional leadership have no ownership of a stake in the petroleum industry. Something like that could be very detrimental because it's not going to benefit your local communities. The state as it is at the moment to have sole custodianship and ownership of petroleum raises a number of questions. One, the high level of corruption that is in government is endemic. If you read the report of the Odieta General regarding irregular expenditure, maladministration, it goes over the roof. Now, if the state solemnly owns and is the custodian of mineral rights and the minerals that are being extracted there even at the expense of the local communities, what happens to the money that is being drawn from those areas? It goes to national coffers, and once it's in national coffers, it disappears at the national coffers. And your local communities are the ones that are suffering very much. Two, you need to look into the whole notion of environmental degradation. Whenever you are going to embark on exploration, whether it's gas or oil or whatever, what environmental impact is it going to have on the local community? Because it doesn't make sense, chair, for oil to be mined here while the local communities are not seeing the fruits of what their local area is reaching. So that issue that the state should become the sole custodian ship, even at the expense of local authorities, needs to be reviewed. Some percentage of ownership should devolve from your state apparatus up there down to your traditional communities where they exist and where it is. And two, it is very important that when government makes deals with companies, thereby all means not to focus more on multinational companies. They are not here to benefit the local communities, they are here to make money and take resources away from our people. It is important that government should find a way whereby generation of strong locally-based companies is looked into so that the local community should be the first one that owns and enjoy partly ownership of the minerals that have been generated. At the moment, I can assure that most of the multinational companies that are in this country have nothing to do with local economic development. They are here to make money at the expense of the local communities. Now, it is imperative that the control of those resources should largely vest in the state, devolve it further to your local authorities where they have been mined at to benefit the local people. And the companies that are coming there should come there with the whole notion of knowing that there is a particular stake that they will be entitled to, not something like we are hearing that the state will only have a twenty percent stake in that. That is counterproductive, that is counterrevolutionary. It is important that our local people should benefit first. This thing of multinational companies coming here to milk local resources at the expense of the local people should come to an end. The Nigerian experience, if you look at it properly, should become an eye-opener. We currently have a problem nationally of electricity. Remember, mine exploration goes with energy generation. We currently have a problem of electricity, as you are well aware nationally. And in one of the IDPs Yamopaniya 2021, a project to build a dam along the gorgeous Stratum Tunnel there on the earth thirty-six was allocated in the IDP Yamopani and a budget of three hundred and fifty million was allocated. We pledge with this committee to look into that project because that dam we can also use it for electricity generation through hydro power generation, and it can boost locally in terms of job creation and it can augment to the national grid. Your new Minister of Electricity should without delay get in touch with Yamopani. Look at these two projects. One, you have the warp that site that is meant to generate electricity, I was told. As to how it was sabotaged, not generate electricity anymore, I don't know. And we have this outstanding project here IDP Yamopani. You cannot speak of petroleum generation or exploration without looking to augment energy generation like electricity. The two goals end in hand. So we need those projects to be up and running. And lastly, the issue of access to petroleum resources. It is important, chair, that this committee, not only today, you must have regular workshops with communities whereby you engage the local community so that people are aware of what is happening. Today, we are discussing a very, very important petroleum bill, and look at the turnout of people here. The publicity of this thing was very, very poor. If you are not connected via other social platforms, you wouldn't have known what is happening here today. So publicity of events like this whereby maximum community participation is needed is very key for the people to know beforehand they come here, that on such and such a day, this will be happening. So that the type and the amount of energy vested and invested in electioning for political office, platform like this should be given the very same care. A lot of people are totally unaware of what is happening today here in Lenyenye. That's the honest truth. Thank you.
Eh inkomu, eeme na Pizira Goma, Nissake Tela Na Ombisi. Kambe loko ilangu tisa eka na ombisi lo kufana kuva naxiengeshoa ambana ambana le xi shila nguti sakaka eka vula ngutiri za wona. Kutane kuna tinndauleti ingati anchisaaka eka na ombisi. Makainwani le i nga teresua koko anchisa eka na ombisi kulangu tisa kavula uri zafumo eka le shingata vaskarositeriwa na shicheluwa, le shu shingata vaskiru ko na. Shikombiso shakase le xi kula uraku ishona shakuva kampani ya Shell yeri na vungwini eka oily yale Nigeria. Ibi yo na i shavisela mfulwa Nigeria oily le i. Kasima kainwani kulangu tisa kavungwini zami sawa. La shingana ngokasunene kuva kutisisuwa le shakuwa kunan tluvukiso wa miganga eka tirisati makata vungwini zami sawa. Labava vaka na vungwini za oily, aku vimiganga le i nga viniva misava le oily yingata vaka ri icheroa ko na. Ekuba ibona shimo shale shaku tikampani leti kulu, ito na tihetela ka ti vavi ni vati oily leti tiaka ti atichela e mi gangeni yava aki. Makale infumo Africa dzonga uru kuila ndeliriseni kaku tlereseroa kama sawa na kuangalasua kama sawa kutleka vinila vanga tekeruwa eka minkarla inga hunsza. Yina ngokasunene eka kuwisa mathluin timaka tansluvukiso na kuwa kulangu tisuwa eka timakaliti ta kuteroa kama oily. Imbesi nan tluvukiso nafteresua shayon. Kasita tama kare tlela kashikombiso sha le Nigeria. La vava aki Nigeria, vanga rikuku buyeruwe ne kucheroa kama oily eti kwenra won. Bangwan ba wona batlala va i va oily le i kume kaka misaveni ya wona. Va tshaluk vaka arvare ngata kuii va oily le i. Timakata vungwini zami sawa na kutisisa le shaku miganga i va na vungwini za shicheluwa. Le shu shuka vaskiru ko na mgangeni ya layo, timan ngokasunene. Makainwani ibu wini za vurangere za shinto kumbetu hosi. Ekuba ibona vanga ri na ave shukari eka vungwini za le shu vaka vaskarosicheroa mgangeni ya won. Kasikuva mfulwa na vungwini eka shicheluwa inkuasu. Nationala le shu sia kama thluini sisake tela maka ya vukungonzani. Ikwalo loko ilangu tisa leka mfulu le ntsale, ibona shimo shala ntsa shavukungonzani. Le shu shingao umelela eka minkari le inga hunsza. Ibonile infumo ukarewa ti buyeriwa kumbeva ngwani eka mfulu eh vati buyeriwa. Kasithlalurwane mgangeni lokucheroi le mi godi, kua mfulwa wunavungwini uru wo she. Shicheluwa le shu na kubieroa kakona, kuisua eka inkwama watiko inkuaru. Ibi lokurka inkwama watiko inkuaru kuva uhangalasua na ti ko tani inzole ya shati male. Kambe va aki va mgangolo ava buyeriwe. Shinwane fanele kuwila nguti sa esutanzaku eka mbango le shu shuka ko na. La kuva kakuvalangiwele kumbekuva nasi cheluwa shukari. Kasikufa nokuva na vulleri za kutisisa le shaku ngaha vana esutanzaku sanjani so biya eka mbango namigangali kume kaka eka tinndaueto. Kutisisa itlalurwane shaku miganga ya layo, yavu yeriwa eka le shu shuka shicheriwa. Makaya kuva mfulwa kuva wona unga na vungwini ntsena ifanele yela nguti sisuwa kumbeku lheriwa. Nationala kutisisa le shakuva rangere wa shinto kumbetu hosi, na bona vao shaxianla vaku mbeka kumbeva kumbiwa eka le shu shuka su umelela. Kasinfumo loko ukarutira, awa nguti shu shaku vina ntwana no na tikampani tamati kuela hande ta tinshaka ntsena. Aku kume kitikampani talakaya leti natonati vaka ti buyeriwa. Ekuba tikampanti tinshaka tova tikare tiwa shicheluwa na shteresua shalati kweni tuhuma nationala. Mfulwa ufanele lokuka ruku ma tikampani leti talakaya. Utisisa le shaku natonata tluvukisiwa ti ko takuva ti buyeriwa ti ko ekua angarella. Kuva na vungwini kusuka eka mfulwa wa le shukari. Kutaeka mfulwa e mi gangeni na konaku tutisua le shaku kuva na vungwini zukarli bizi baba kavare na kubieroa. Kutisisa le shaku vana ibona vabieroa kaku sungula. Ashitwa le shaku inantlo antloa gezi la tu kweni. La kunga talava eka gezi kuva kuia emathluini kuva namintira shicheluwa. Iwana iwana le i faneke iwa ko na. Kutane makainwani ya le faneke ulamsewa. Luka rela nguti sa timaka teto eka pimanieto wa shifunza ntsongo shamo pani wa shati male shama spala. Kuna shirenganyeto shale shaku akwa damu, kuwe na malili nga vikuwa etlalo le shaku akwa damu. Kambe projekaya ko na i mile, i projekeli ayta vaxaxianla eka kuva kuva na gezi. Nayona projekingwani ya damra duwop na konan, akurka damu liri arla ngutero le shaku renga kotaku umesa gezi. Ashitwe kli shaku makaya ko na ifke ika vanya teka kui. Kutane itlalo lerungwane ufana kulangu tisuwa le shaku timaka ta shicheluwa sha oily, imbesi esutafambi sana na timaka tabukona za gezi nafteresua le shu shingava ka shiru ko na. La kufanele kuva na makainwani bumabumela ke le shakuva na kupurisana kusuka kangu ina komite inava aki. Minkari inkuayo kuva natinxangela tana d'onzo ku d'ondisa banu, ishi le shu kula uraku ishon. Ikwashe shlo loko ilangu tisan tlaya van lavanga konan la olweni ntsongo vanbutala avanga TV le shaku umelela ina olweni ya Lenyenye eka sukura namontla ngandekala vanga kotaku kuma shati social media vaku takuva vata. Kutane kumbela le shaku mi hamba, mi hangalasa ma rungula ya tinsangela tana leti lokoti ta vateru ko inko.
Ta vinja bill. Hmm I stand here, my name is Koni Ramreti from ward sixteen. Hmm yeemimo, who disagree really the bill, based on the reasons, the following reasons. It is not true that the bill in its current form, form enhanced state participation, it is does not the opposite and hand over the petroleum resources to total Shell and soon. Soon other multination will get their stake on it. Kegana na rapa le tabaya ugoncha oru, eh vatuva so swanjare great ten percent. Elor gerna baru ro, ro baba inchii, tana vatuva bashwe. So we di moa tabaya wa ya ten percent, egwana karegiwe erethlo faja ugoduri sa fasai, yarinyenyafaja. Ibi le kaze lenwenka noru kelle sapaga dupkaga bulale wa yarina. There is enough evidence to show that BEE does not work. A more distribution model of revenue from resources is to use for a state-owned company that must pay profit into the national revenue fund, not royalties but profits. In this way, kereke gana na leona tabaya bill. I thank you.
I'm talking about the oil. The petrol total share. I remember more than I remember. The debate about oil. The petroleum. I remember that. I remember that. I remember that. I remember that. I remember 10%. Because I remember. 10%. Because I remember. Because I remember. I remember petroleum. I remember that. I remember that. I remember. 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 I remember.
I thank you. Greetings to all. My name is Raymond Fupane. I'm a committee member here in Zaneni. I'm just going to touch a few because already many of the points they've already alluded, the previous speakers here. But first of all, let me put my position on the bill to say I reject it. Further, what I suggest is that we amend the old one that is existing, especially when coming to the level of dealing with the petroleum. Within the very same bill, let's have a space for that. We can't have a Bible from Genesis to every chapter and then we have its own book. Whereas this book, its purpose is direct, actually addressing the same social health problems. We can't have such. So that thing on its own of having new agencies and everything in this new development that you are proposing, you are just actually making it difficult for this struggling government to be able to run its own affairs. Because what we are doing now is that we are going to create this lot of bodies, committees and agencies which their purpose are just going to be mere for administration, which does not speak to the government benefiting and be able to make money to help the people, those who are in need. So this one, the new one, I totally reject it. For me, it gives me an example when we were dealing with Eskom. The unbundling and all that whereby we are leaving the real issues why we don't have electricity. Then we think like if we do disbundling, whatever you call it, where those who are selling at this point, the production at this point, we think that we are addressing. This is the same thing I think was subjected to here. So the other point is that this bill that you are putting, it's not addressing the problems that we are currently having in the country as we speak. It's further isolate the existing problems and give them a certain space to exist there. But they exist as big problems as they are. Because first of all, it does not address the issue of the government participating fully there. So that whatever the money that they make, because government does not operate based on the benefits or profit, whatever the money that they make can be then now go to the National Revenue Fund or the Sovereignty Wealth Fund if we form it, one of the goodest if we can reach that stage, whereby that money then will help us in other developments in the country. And that on its own, that Sovereignty Wealth Fund, it will also help us to exist as the whole South Africa. Because if you check the current where we have as South Africans, it's not every province or every corner of the country whereby we have mineral resources. So we can't have a country whereby there is a certain concentrated area of mineral resources. Then those certain area of a country is the one that is getting developed because they have the resources. I therefore think that the bill should be dealing and speaking with us in terms of how do we benefit the black people in this? And to benefit the black people, we can never shy away from that, that the only arm that the black people and especially poor majority they have is the government. So in order to help the black people is to make the government to participate fully so and not just in an administration part. Let them be able to mine, let them be able to trade, let them sell and do everything here. Let even the bill speaks that when you extract whatever the minerals that you want to extract, which are related to petroleum and gas, let it be refined in the country. Whenever it leaves the country, it should only be the final product being sold so that we create a job for our people. And another thing, again, I've seen somewhere when I was going through your bill, you talk about the BE being an ability to be a juristic person. And I totally agree with that. Then because if we allow that, it sounds so good, but if we allow that, then we are inviting the already fat cats, the multi-billionaires blacks now to come in and hijack every BE deal in every society where there will be and this kind of resources. They will come in there, then they will take everything because they already have established resources and everything. Then what about the communities? And secondly, still pointing on the issue of the government must participate fully there and take the ownership there of 50% is to say to this committee, please and very please, as poor as we are, who are not just job seekers, even when you talk to us, don't speak as we will create jobs. We want empowerment. We want to benefit from these minerals. We want also to be big bosses. Every time people come here, you know, create agencies, you know, you'll get jobs. We don't want your jobs. We want to be empowered. We want to stand on our own. We don't want your RDP and everything. We want to build our own. But how can that be achieved? As poor as we are, the government becomes our main arm to achieve that. So the last one that I want to put to the committee, even if they didn't put that much. We did not get much of an expert on these issues, especially expert who have been there who dealt with the previous mining issues. So that it could have helped a lot in formulating the logics and ideas into these policies. We're going to contribute a lot. Because where we are now currently, we just see the shift of a certain policy that existed, but it's going to be refined and put somewhere. And it's not going to address our issues. But if we had those people, they will tell us why Marigana people were killed, why Marigana people couldn't get the money. What was wrong? What was the policy contradiction into that level? So we needed a policy that will come and didn't correct the existing one, not to take something else and put it aside and say no, because it's aside, then we can deal with a side like that. So I thank you. And the last point before I leave is that, you know, the latter speaker spoke, but I want to also emphasize that when you do a public hearing, especially of the things which are at most important like this, don't be in hurry, don't rush, take your time, come to us all. You came here in Linyenye. I'm telling you, they are not under a traditional leadership. The latter, the previous speaker here spoke about the issue of land ownership, which is mostly especially rural areas under the custodianship of the Maroshi and others. They are not here. And the land that now where you are conducting this thing, they are not here. They don't have power here. But at least if you went to Ulovedu, you went to Nuamito or wherever, or maybe you expand when you come here, you also visit those places where there are those people. They are very important stakeholders into this kind of discussion. Thank you.
I'm talking about Raymond Fupane. I'm talking about Zaneni. I remember the debate about Mopani. I remember. 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 Because I remember. 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 Because I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. Because I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. Because I remember. 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 Because I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. Because I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. I remember. Because I remember. Because I remember. I remember. I remember. Because I remember. I remember. I remember.
I want to greet all of you. My name is Mashile Palani, coming from ward eighty-three in Greater Zanin. I belong to the civil society, so I'm one of the person who I want to give input on this matter. Firstly, is that I really applaud and agree with the bill itself. I agree with the bill. However, there is a lot of input which we want to come up. One of the areas is that the committee must look at the principle of prior concern. Pre-concern is that, as you know, as a community where the mine or where the refineries is going to build, as a community, I need a pre-concern. We must have a concern from that community or from Emma Rosini, from the traditional leaders to say, yes, we can able to do here. That concern is very important. And as you know, with the court case in Koloveni, that issue was in the court case to say they never been given a consent although the issue is happening there. So the second part is that we must able to put very clear on the principles of NIMA Act. Because one of the things is that I see that it's just a surface in that thing. But more important is that this refineries or this extractive industry is much coming with the pollution. It's mostly polluting the water, polluting the species in the ocean. So that's the NIMA principles must be really adhered into. One of the issues which I want to put is the petrol, the agency itself. I mean, section two, three point two is dealing with the composition of the committee. I agree there, but I want to add that in that committee, which is number E, I want to add E there on that point is that a legally constituted civil society body, a national civil society body, must be also nominate representative into the committee. What I mean is that like what Nedleg is doing, what's happened is that civil society representatives are in Nedleg. So therefore, even in this committee, civil society participation must nominate representative into this. I know that the National Nudlia Act has got something like that. But we need to emphasize that it must not be government or departments alone because no one is going to oversee the role. Because sometimes is that government department have become captured. When they are captured, we are going to the wrong way. There's no one to say, hey, hang on, here is a problem. So we want a civil society body, somebody from civil society to be part of that so that it can be the ear and eyes of us as the civil society. One of the issues of refineries and development of this extractive industry is that it must be adhere to the renewable energy technologies. We know that we got a transition to renewable energy. But what's happened is that we need to ensure that they are not burning, they are not using the old technology. They must able to use the new technology which is applicable, which is required. So what's happened is that they must adhere to the transitions, to transitioning to the renewable energy technologies. They must not be using a lot of, for example, electricity while we got, while we can able to, they can able to transit to the renewable energy technologies. So the refineries and the companies, they must able to do that. That is one of the input which we want to do. The other one is that I like this in the mining, in the mineral development bill. You know, Chair, this is, I know that this is your duty. The social labor plans from that act of the Mining and Development Bill Act must come here. Because what's happened is that although it's not well monitored, the company are not practically apply this. But the question is that is a good clause which can ensure that wherever is going to be a refinery or extractive industry like oil and gas, social labor plans must be implemented. What do you mean that the surrounding communities around that area must able to benefit? What do you mean that the surrounding communities around that area must able to benefit? So we don't want whereby the social labor plans is going to be neglected and community is going to be neglected in there while the area is being or the state is extractive that is extracting that minerals there. So we need the social labor plans to be emphasized in that industry. Lastly is that, you know, everywhere where there is refineries and everything like South, South, South Daven, you find that in the longer term, the communities are become ill. They become affected by asthma. They become affected by a lot of diseases in the area. So we want before the company can happen, this must be put in the in the bill itself, is that epidemiology studies must happen. Because we know, we we want to check if whether in the long term, if we say we benefited out of this company, what about the health impact? Because you can you can find that, yes, we benefited, but the community are sick. The communities die in that area. So what will happen? So we want the company to, as part of the environmental assessment impact, to ensure that epidemiology studies happening in that area. And then lastly is that I want to ensure that the inner, this this separation is that we are not going to treat as what we done with the NPRDA, whereby we say we got one environmental, what what you call, one environment, environmental law or whatever. We want to ensure that the NIMA Act, wherever the applicant is going to put the the application for a development in that sector, that the the Department of Environmental Affairs is well engaged, especially the National Department. Because we don't want a way that the environmental act is just a a tick box whereby it's not really applying. I mean, I know that there is a a new development of Messina Makado this side. But the question is that we see that it's a sort of tick box and we don't want that. We want that full environmental assessment impact must be happen. Thank you.
Lina lakaginama, Mashele Palani. Ki twa World 33 ya Greater Zanin Municipality. Ki omuwalenloko la bosichaaba. Leo le xokomijegutava ya gorisichaaba saga borinase thabo loa. Kamu kha wo fi. Ki kwanali kuba kidumelela na le mu la ote wo. Fela sesinshwenya ngogore. Pili mu tu akadira. Taba ya goru kutli kuu epiwedi epiamo le filunle. Okosanjoo kuba lipuleri shano litumelela no ya sichaaba kakakareyito. Kubanidilu diyeke didira la ma fello. Di fela le tadiya mama pilo ababtuba obapila ofa. Sabu bi. Ma roshi arina apa edu kathuko. Omme se oketuwa boroko ore nakabakalauru. Ma roshi akona asweri kuna kaa. Ye o le naga ngudi la di rafsho kudi mayo. Se o le sona le sonjoo le shoku melengore. Ke li ita mu li tlo obuleri shanalera nakataba jamela wa yamkutavo. Tomang le buli shanelisichaaba pili. Gorretanu kuno kushisha orle naga kudi raing. Le batuba limu ba du la ngona. Malabar bilele bu thata kamo bulubedi kataba ya bo roshi kaba kalauru batuba bang ba ilivaske wa buli shanalisichaaba. Ba kwanalo kuro ba kudi la wangkatava ya bo roshi. Ke mu ya taba jilsonjoo le na ke li ita morina. Lila buleri shi. Rukono tiba orle naga ing. Reina reba du fa wafa. Ruto hona kubuleri shanalera na ra kwanako ba ra kana ichana lila na. Kasi o le naga ngosi di la mu nagenyareina. Kuna li NIMA Act. Ye o iloko mu la o o unya, bu batubago na ba ba buleri shanan. Ore na retudiya imu. Fela utshwenya koro ilo wabalichila falwa ya moyo. Wabalichila falwa ya meti. Te ukamuka kadiya shoko melanga bakalauru. Mrao kana go. Di mama pilo ababatu. Batubago kaba kaladi loche. Di sonjoo di shoko melo. Pili hokadi roasi. Two, three, two. Ki kwanali ona omme. Sichaaba katada reto. Si sonjoo ore se kate temo mo di puleri shano. Niskla se fela kathuko la di la di lo la taba paraka jor. La rabali diyeke basa kushi jor abutu. Basonjoo di la kasi le na le sibolela. Le na le ya siku shisha. Fela reina rensichaaba kare siku shisha. Le naga oru kata la shasaka ra nu. Nedlegi iloko kampaniya ifuma na koli sichaaba. Inali mo kato o emela kosi chaba. Ke ba di la di puleri shuni chabo na kidiya managoli mananutshu abona au amago sichaaba. Musho okosanjoo di la bosha beji juwutzeneli di go. Loko na juwumata. Kabakalauru ke nsa di le bosha beji. Mangle mangago no fishamu ayitirela sa saratao. Kamapilo ababatu basichaaba. Meka mrao ra tava li tama rago kiri sa tibali heyo. Ma jadi ngali kuno na le technology emta e o sonjoo ore. Ke mu tu atlo ya di la di rafsho kuba di epiamo nagin. Kulebelele kura a hokasi bele malueji. Di kampani di o le naga ngudi kura rafa kuba wepa. Di sonjoo kuba di le ma ma emon ago li mu heri tamutabi ya technology. Ba xumxu mi khae mi swa ya technology kura ba teba kuno kuri. Ba ti bele di tamrao kiri si rubus. Kabakalauru ke nchi le fela riwa le matata ama leji kabakala orafsho kadi epia. Sama fela lo. Le re le naga aru kanya mu la wa di rafsho. Limu la wa oli. Ma ra kali lebelele kura kuna li ludinchi te odi ya managoo. Melawa emi bediye kuba mu la kaka nia emi bediye. Ya ya tualenana ya sipili shisha. Le sonjoo le lebelele kamo kha mu la wa wa di rafsho. Lebelele kamo kama la o wa petroli amu kore na. Agoni mu li swanandi sipila la na ngon. Ni kaka ngon ngon kutushana or. Okosko wabale matata kama rago afao. Ti kulu kuya re na kani chi ife le tsa. Ilima taten kabakalauru. Ha okua wa di la di nia kishi sho pili. Koto ma kudi wa di rafsho. Ore ma pilo arina ata ashirel diyeke jualaka sichaaba kiya lebo.
No, thank you, thank you for for the inputs that we have gone from from the round that just passed.
Cancelation enekashbuma bmelo le xingas kuma eka rengule raku unzaku.
As we have said before, it's 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 a meeting where you speak to us to inform and give us what you think of the bill. I think up to so far, we are doing well.
Danile shinga bula kusunglini tinhlengeletan le mi blabla kuna hin na mi ni kamaboneli ngwene lewshaku mi bo na njani. Na ombisu kutafika sheshi ilo kufamben kale.
Indeed, it is not a tick box exercise for us.
Ina eka hin na ai ndiro lo ingo endla lakue etisa nau.
Because we have gone, yesterday we were in Toyando, today we are here, tomorrow we are in Mokopani. And that other day we will be in Polokwani. So we are moving around in the province.
Toloka ere Toyando na muntai lani mznuku ile Mkopani, mndwani ile Polokwani. Si ilo kufambafambeni nasifunza ngkulu inkuwa shu.
So all the inputs are important. On on that note, I would I would request more hands for the round that we are going to take. Please speak to the bill so that you don't disadvantage yourself about not speaking to the bill. Because other people will speak on your behalf somewhere else.
I kualo ni ta kutaza lewshaku ikumama boku ya ngwani ya kume. Kambe lewshaku mbala bula enau ombisi. I kualo mngaba labuli iwo na mi bamititso na ngwena. Ban bangwana katinda otu nganbata bula bula iwo na. Ibi kuba shubuma bmelo shavo na lefitekerwa kenthlo kwe.
So we are going to start with the gentleman at the back, check shirt. The lady. The lady. You would have seen in the in the previous round, there were about only two ladies.
Midamesboninka rengulera ngao unzaku wa nawaisa tibambirin nze na.
There's a lady in the red duke. And then there's a lady in the also having is it a pink duke? And then cross black and white jacket. And the 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 two people and yourself. The gentleman in the middle. Alright, let us let us get some inputs from from the ten people that are here. An emphasis is also just keep to to the time so that all the other people can participate. But we have we have been doing well up to so far.
Ay kumen maboneli la bangatshamala. Ay tsi kela lamaka lewshaku ilhaisanka reka timena tetinaru. Le wshakuna na la bangwanbata kumanka te kwa kubala bula kambe milikutire nka shlokta fika sheshi.
Once more, feel free to use the language of your choice. Okana wa bua, okana wa bolabula, okana wa teta, okana wa waspika.
Na kambe tsushikanu kubamitire sa ri milirungu inami la ba korona endla le misula wshakusho.
We we are incapable hands. Thanks, thanks.
Ila mabukini ya kasi la ba toloka kumbi kundulu shari ri.
Hello, okay. Yeah, I want to greet the panel. I want to greet everyone attending this session today in the name of peace. My name is Moses Ramafalo Sancho Palabora. So mine is gonna be short and brief. I stand here to support the bill. Though I'd prefer that there must be a review with regard to the percentages that are mentioned in the bills. So that it have a direct and meaningful impact that will continue to bring the betterment of the lives of the people of this country. Two, there must be a clause in the bill that guard against corruption. I thank you.
Nza michewa etangweno. Emina Moses Ramafalo ni xiro shasankho Palabora. Emina ningele his. Inshlo sungula linanga tai boche ya lewshaku na ombisilo nza useketela. Kambe nitlala ni ringanyeta lewshaku ku lungi siwa kumbi ku antwisiwa shingwana eka wana. Shosungula nze ringanyeta lewshaku kuoshiwa shibulwa le xinga ta antwisa shingwana. Xi xi shubula shakona ikubaku antwisiwa ti percenti tala bangta buyeriwa eka na ombisilo. Lewshaku kubuyeriwa banu botala etikuweni kungare la batongo. Xabu mbiri nze ringanyeta lewshaku eka na ombisilo. Kutela kulanguti si siwa maka yonui sana nibukungunzoana. Lewshaku kutasiwe riwa kubangwana ba buyeriwa shingafane la inku.
Greetings to the portfolio and everyone in the hall. My name is Mutibanka Zbani Desia. I'm the regional secretary of Sancho in Mopani. I'm with the delegation of forty-five here that represent the masses that we have consulted and that supported the bill. We support the bill with the hope that it will create jobs and opportunities to grow the economy. We support the bill because we hope it will elevate the property and give chance to upcoming entrepreneurs in the petroleum market. It will also, we hope it will also address the issues of inequality in the society. But the bill should be, I mean, the the, this should be under the cust- custody of the government. Not be privatized. Because we all know the consequences of privatization. Only those who are financially financially okay are the ones that will be will 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 benefit. So it must be under the custody of the government. Thank you.
Ki radawu bi merisha komitiya arina ya retejogofa na ki mulibua Desia. Ki emeje mo chatruwa Sancho. Iwile ki emeje me chatruye kaba oma sumi amani amijwe melano. Ya me chatru ye o ishumaha wlesichaaba. Reteha mu la kaka nyawu. Kakulu felo lili hutu la gori. Ita hona goru shlo melani sumo. Loko tushao selika le kani mahari ngari na kivala kababatu. Omme re kope la gori. Musho ula ole. Kabutu tala bu para tava ya mu la kaka nyawu. Omme iwile re kope la gori. Kagertiba gori kere katera ofa batuba bangoru ba olale. Kutlo balama tata auruto opalewa kua lukisha kiya lebo.
Inkomo. Mina imina meri ambe we. Secretaria Sancho Sabridini ya Zanin. Ne lava kuta ne tata pusha demo shi. Wakuba na ombisilo aui ema chwe. I kuba loko ifika la. Kakufika. Ikana etan. Loko parlamenta ya ehile kutatabula buri sana na hin na. Isilo le shunga tapu na hin na tani iba aki. Asunga ehisi ka ehelo. Le xime ni kenza kusho ikubani riphati. Ya kutaitata vumba bilile. Lewshaku ayu hume itata tirela ba aki. Laba bangasisiwa na lumia makaya. Laba bangariki na kutwisi san chumu eka sulo sotala loko su umelela. Loko hin na ikoti le kutalan. Ifanele ifika ivula lewshaku silo asui ema chwe. Okay. Le xi kumbela kusho. Hin kwenu ibula bula shilo shiwe hambe ha upumela na ulo ambaye upumeli. Ile kubulabulenka shilo shiwe lewshaku government. Aive yo ode ifambisa kasilo lisu. Lewshaku laba ba funa kugovernment. Bari yina government yina ba puni. Ba puni laba ba government lava. Aba yeva ya ipuna sunene lewshaku. Iya iya protector. Silo hin kwasu. Lesu si endeluwa ku va aki laba ba votaku. Lewshaku batu nsheka. Iya hamba na na ba ndava ngofu ngofu ba kuii ba timali tanfu mo. Ilaba inga baranzeki bangapoki baba vekele. Ingetila itata pumela lewshaku na ulo outire. Outire la ba na laba bangta iyivela. Nikombela lewshaku hin kwenu ifamba itzakele ina ulo kurilo kumiata mi buya. Mi tabuya nasilo sakale. A inga abula bula ngofu kubanu ba bula bula inga ru. Ah inga abulabulinngopu kubana bavulabulinkaru wale. Enedusman bangasubulabulala. Nikombela mistakeela intro kweni inko mu.
Thank you. I am Beewe Miriam from Sancho in Zanini. My inputs are that I support the bill. And I'm of the view that we should I'm of the view that we should generally support the bill. That I'm here to make a positive contribution to the bill. That as we gathered here, we should be helping the government to enhance the bill and come with better suggestions so that this bill is able to help people. We should be saying things that will continue to assist the committee in working on the bill. And that those that are in charge and are helping government should continue to help government. But on the other end, protect voters, the community, to ensure that their rights are protected. We do not support those that steal from the government and the people, but we are generally happy with the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Greetings to all protocol observed. Mine is Johanna Radopola from Ward Thirty-Five, Zanini. Peer Councilor. I'm here to reject the bill. In this way, no need for additional legislation to separate petroleum from the Minerals and Petroleum Resources Development Act. We reject the upstream petroleum development bill. We need to remind the committee members that the petroleum like minerals remain a common heritage for all and in the custody of the state. On behalf of all of the people, we are saying renaba nabataryantu, renaba nabatular. Mla wu rena rebana luri auru sutiga sila aribenefit. So I'm here to reject. Thank you very much.
My name is Ratapola Johanna from Ward Thirty-Five, Zanini. I'm also a councilor. We are rejecting this bill because of the following reasons. One, it does not actually help us in any way. We are not benefiting anything from this bill. The other thing is as the black people ruled by Chief Sukukune, we don't agree nor accept this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm greeting all. My name is Onika Singange from Ward Thirty-Two, Zanini. I'm peer councillor under greater Zanini. I'm coming here to reject the bill. Why? It does not work to give rights to private companies to enjoy their so-called common heritage alone because they do not share the profit. The logistic about my petroleum resources must establish estate owner petroleum companies that will explore products, traders, transport and sell oil and natural gas and not only ensure rights to multinationals. These multinational companies do not want to pay taxes, do not want to hire our people and do not take a responsibility of the environmental damage. They are all involved in aggressive tax avoidance, profit shifting and base erosion. Thank you.
Vito ramena ne Onika Singange. Mena ne lava kubula leshaku na umbisilo anzi useketeli. Shivangelo shabsheesho eku ne tikampani leti ta tala antle leti lava ka tikampani tala antle leti lava ka kungena eka benzuler eh ra oily imbisi. Atilabi kuavelana nitiko profit kumbey nswalu lo tiukumaka loko tiendla benzoo. Mena nzi ringanyeta leshaku kuba na kumbey shilaurua enfumo leshaku enfumo utako takuphakela ba akatiiko. Kasishingwana leshie endla kaleshaku nzinga seketeli na umbisilo ekuba tikampani leti nakambe atilabi kuakela shubalo. Atilabi ku thola banu balenda wini kasi titlala tingalabi kudzara butishamuleri lebdu bakakona eh logo kumbey butishamuleri dzar buyelu lebdu bakakona eh lebdu kumbakambango. Kasitindela inkuato tirengeeta ku baleke la kuakela shubalo kutane kuala okasheesho na umbisilo anzi useketeli ngo.
Xaku sungula nranza kupusha lava chaibiseki lava ngalaniwa hinkwenu kanwe eh. Ni imele ku seketela bilile bililewa ntsa ini tzaki sana iransa. Minani ward komiti ya ba Palabora municipality Palabora. Minana iseketela ekuka kuzemita la weba leparlamenteni ami otetanamita. Mitai shileriso amosila aba kutalanuwa mitatapuna ina. Ina amila bamsama amikarimiita mi evita na ita. Ina etanangala seela timakale titingala. Lesheesho ku lava ba lekule valakutira baruwesi. Anarimita ilave lava rangeru lava ingatatirisana na wana kuba na ba rangeru masue ne itwa na etzama ansin na mahosia ina natindunata ina. Namuntla ni ji inkarungopu nengata jang karini eti.
I'd like to greet honorable members. I support the bill. I am from the ward committee in Palabora. The bill is good. I like the bill. And I acknowledge that you as members of parliament are here because you've been instructed to come and engage us and speak with us about these issues. Those from far that may want to work alone will not be able to succeed because you are here and you're going to engage us and help us understand the issues. I support the bill. Thank you.
No, erikitrome ka ulumerisha wetapeli beberimu kambela kamuka. My name is Clement Ramatoka from Ward Nine in Zanini. And I'm Legata Village. I stand here to reject the bill. As to separate it from the mineral ones. Let it be one, then I want to put additions there as part of input. Particularly on section, on plus eight, to say that when you reject the applications, government must also add input or assist those people who can meet requirement to meet requirement rather than reject them without assisting them. There, when we go to plus thirty-one as part of addition, we, from that ten percent, the minimum of ten percent, let's increases to fifty-one percent so that black people who can achieve the interests of black people. Black people are not meaning the Asians and Indians only. We are referring to African people who are oppressed. Let's go to the plus thirty-four, section two there. In terms of the role that it must be played. We are saying law must say at least all petroleum products found in South Africa must be produced and processed in South Africa to contribute to local industries. The section thirty-five, plus thirty-five, section three, we want to add to say that let the state can dilute its participation not less than fifty percent. It must be eh like that, it must be more than fifty. And also, I want to add to say that that bill must compel departments to establish industries that will show local production, technology and equipment that will be used in the industries. Lastly, the bill must also outlaw labor brokers and contractors for work needed to be done. And compel that eh, the law compel the department to employ people full-time. Thank you very much.
My name is Clement Ramatoka. I want to greet the committee. I'm from Ward Nine, Zanini. I reject the bill. Separation should not be allowed. Kichola rtsansi kiblela kaspediakir. Ki dimedisha komitiarina na kela Ramatoka Clemente ki chako Ward Nine kasa Zanini. Harikuane ibile hara amochele mla wakanyawo. Ki kalebaka langusonechohur e atrohanu ri nyaka iduchika mohelingka hona. Resonechohur musho ibewana uchu shanshachaborona. Joaliki nyaka horri ya hotlos three point one. Ten percent ele ba ebule jingiona ayrodoshwe. Ebbe fifty-one percent. Kabakalaho itle ohono kuhula ba tu bakabore. Thirty-four point two. Mola kubulalang katiye joachewidi diriling desonechohur diro mo Afrika Bora. Kumi biladi shumi shoma Afrika Bora. Di diro di xotra mo Afrika Bora. Emafelelo di chalecho kuchamo di rashenche desonechohur ebeta Afrika Bora. Litsona desonechohur kobele mla wu ti belang ba tuwailungo bakanyaka kushumi shadi rashote kamowaratanka hona. Di lokamoka adidi romo Afrika. Di rashaka moka didiromo lidicheleja ebemo. Kushumi shaha pe liditlabakelo za Afrika Bora kiala wu.
Greetings to you all. My name is Amanda Mondlane from Ward Twenty-Four Greater Zanini. I stand before you to reject the bill based on these following reasons. Before the operational lessons are issued, companies must clearly outline disaster management regulations for surrounding communities. In the event of leg of other unforeseeable disasters impending from the company activities. They must also outline environmental protection that rehabilitation process to be observed during and post-operational. This should be in the form of a binding legal contract that will give the state power to pursue the companies in the event of non-compliance. The bill must make it illegal for companies or government to explore gas or conduct any gas activities that will be harmful to health of the people, harmful to the environment and harmful to groundwater system. I thank you.
Mena Amanda Mondlane. Na umbisilo anzi fumela lanawo. Shivangelo shabsheesho ekuba shosungula eh tikampani. Eh shosungula ekuba eh hilaba tikampani leti ngata eh kumbey hilaba leshaku kungahamba nisiwe. Kuba nchumo we. Kungabina nza ulo leingata ngutela eh shichela kumbey eh shichela kasi alatlalo. Kuba naleingata eh ngutisa oily imbisi. Kasishingwana anifambisanayona ekuba hilaba leshaku loko kungasi sungurawa project ina yi ya shichela. Kufanele kuranga kuba na bullabisi zigaleshaku va aki batakumbeka injane. Ikuala okale shi kutala kakuwa nasupiko enzaku kaloko kusungurawe ti project leti. Kutane anzi useketeli nzi tzakala leshaku enfumo kuba wana ulo ngutela ka inkuas. Inko.
Greetings, Lhaisaka Swaya, Sancho Giyani. The only issue we have with the bill is that the owners of the land were not consulted, which are the chiefs who own the land, which is a problem because those resources are from there. And you are telling me you want to give them ten percent. It's like you're stealing from me but want to do it legally. You're taking money from me but you want to do it legally. Where's the seventy percent going? Because the state owns twenty percent. We own ten percent. Where's the seventy going? You're not being clear with that issue. Where is the seventy percent going? Who's taking the seventy percent? You cannot have rights of your own land and you give it to somebody else. Who controls the seventy percent? It means as a state, if you own twenty percent, who tells you what to do what within your own resources? The resources are yours, but you don't own fifty percent of the same resources you want to see the community must benefit from. Ten percent of hundred bucks, it's ten ren. So you want to tell me that I'm getting ten ren and I still have to pay people within the same ten ren? How fair is that? And the other issue, who governs the government? Who governs the government? You have twenty percent, but who governs you? You're making the laws, but who governs you within those laws? Because the issue of corruption, we cannot hide away from it. This will bring us into corruption. But who governs you as the government giving us the ten percent? Because you've not consulted the owners of the land. Even on the bill, it's not there where you have consulted the traditional leaders. It's not there. You've consulted the other departments, but the one person that owns the land, you didn't consult. Thank you. You've consulted the other departments, but the one person that owns the land, you didn't consult. Thank you.
Li na lakaki na Titi Tete. Re, re, re na releyi bato reba rui ba lefasile. Le, le ribuchaka, mlaoka kwayo, o, o re na. Re na lohwecha ten, ten percent. Musho ur twenty percenti. Na seventy percenti ya kay. Kauri lefasile kilarina. Le na, le laola, ten percenti ye ilogo oru mochele teki ten randi. Le lebeleji oru kilifele ba twawa tango beva shuma fao, kayo na ten randi ele mpa wonyon. Sesi wiko oru na amusho ye na olhapecha kemang olala kemang. Kauri oteji bu meni cha lebu houdu, momusho. Ha lebo leri shane, pele li di la, mlaoka kanyao. Hasela ke la bole shana leba magoshi arina. Le, ilogo boana ba o, ba laola o lefasile la ri. Le bole shana lema goroma wembe, la kwanaka jeli kwanaka jona, mbari na re sa, re sa bole shana ri. Ri, ri, ri reha ni chana, le mlaoka kanyao.
Namlo sa inkwenu, vitaramina, machebula ngoveni no ma great Agiani. Na umbisi low kubula ulua kuwonala na useketela. Kambé ten percenti leni itwakula anikimi nayoni. Wa akate kuwele kurileni ala handila ba namta bangga ndakuna namta etukuma erula inkwe. Nitwinko kusunka anja loco amo ngetela iku twenty percent. Ema ka kuinsana ni ten percent. Ayinka isihe lo inkobo.
Uh greetings. I am Tebula. And I stand to, I am from Giyani. I don't support the, the bill. I don't support the issue of the ten percent that you're talking about. It should be increased to twenty percent so that as the public we can benefit. Thank you.
You captured incorrectly. I might not be fluent with the, with the language, but I heard her saying she, she supports.
Oh, she's, she supports, but she disagrees with the ten percent.
That's what I heard.
My apologies.
Uh, thank you Chairperson. It's, uh, my name is Titi Tete. I'm from Sanco Mupani region. I stand here to support the bill, Chairperson. We believe that it's both innovative and progressive and that it should be supported. We also believe that the bill, the drafters of the bill have taken into account that they should encourage investment into the petroleum industry. Uh, we don't believe that the government itself on its own has got the capacity to do the explorations necessary to discover where these resources are hidden underneath the earth's surface. So it's important to encourage eh, eh investment so that the investors can do the exploration and then the government gets its fair share as stated in the bill. And also it will encourage eh, eh those communities that have been excluded up to so far to get involved in, in, in petroleum resources production and distribution. Uh, Chairperson, we also did not see in the bill how the revenue that to be generated in terms of the twenty percent that's allocated to government. Eh, how is it going to be spent? Uh, Chairperson would suggest that as we proceed, we should explore such ways as using the income, the revenue to provide basic income grants to South Africans. Uh, and also, um, provide bazaris for students. Or as an alternative Chairperson, that the revenue should be shared between the national, provincial and local governments so that it can eh, eh filter down to the ordinary citizens. Chairperson, in conclusion, we support the bill. Thank you.
Eme na Titi Tete. Eh, nzi seketela eh na umbisi low. Eh, kasu nikela, nikensa nilaba ba o shekeshanla loco utzariwa. Ekoba bakutaza leshako koba na eh di kampani dale handelele tinga ta vikisa mali atona eka eh, eh benzuleri ra swichelwa. Ekoba mfo mo uruwoche au ngefikoti ko endla ndiro low inkwao. Kusungula ema kene ya kupamba ulabisisa tindaulele tinga ne swichelwa. Nikoba swicheriwa ibe ku benzuriwa shona. Xavu mbii yonama kabaramba ka eh di kampani letinga ta investa kumbeti, ti vikisa eka benzuleri. Kambé nikana nikutaza miganga leinga katuwangi ki leshaku nayona, yinga ngenelela eka benzuleri ba o shashanla nabona leshaku ba tabuyeriwa. Yin xayi mwani ntsaka la ku bula bula yonama, imailana nimali leinga ta kumiwa. Mfo mo itwele leshaku mfo mo utakuma twenty percent ya mali ya kon. Kambé akulsa msiruangi leshaku malili mfo mo yita yitirisaa inlela ye. Kutane, nzinga ringa nyeta leshaku mfo mo u ngenelela shenene nukulsa msela leshaku utai tirisaa inlela ye malili. Kumbeshana eh kunga ku lokose ku benzuriwa mali ingena. Maliya leyo inkwai leinga ta kumiwa mfo mo ulanguti sa ema kene ya leshaku yitirisiwa eku nyikini kabana ti grant. Tangari inkwao. Kumbeshana yitirisiwa eka shadjanzo kuba ku kumiwa ti bazar leti bana bangga takota ku ti tirisaku yisemashweni ti dionzo tabona. Kumbayi malili ku abela niwa yonakusuke la eka mfo mo wa ti ko ku ya eka mfo mo asifunza angulo ni mfo mo alema ka ya leshaku inkweru yitabuyeriwa. Kutandro yit, yin xamino yetele ya leshaku na umbisi low nza useketela inkobo.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much.
Cancel shenene?
The, the inputs that we have received.
Subu ma bemele shanga sukuma?
So far, uh, you have, you have done well in terms of the inputs, the time and what comes out of the bill that you'd want to see.
Eh, kutavkashe shamilo kutirenikashema ilana subu ma bemele nankari na lesumaku eka na umbisi lesumala ku subona?
Uh, given, given the time that we have spent and the engagements and the further engagements that we are still going to have.
Logelangutusan karlo inga bana wana, kuboresan loco beke kon na, naminjeka njeksa mwani leyi inga tabakona ku ya emashweni?
I think we, we have come to the end of the inputs and I would want, or like the Chairperson, uh, to give us a way forward, what will happen from here and uh, deal with a few clarifications on matters that might have come from the floor, but not necessarily discussing the bill. We are not yet as a committee discussing the bill.
Natsa, nitlakataloso kwa ifkema kumu kaka kuba hita eka mabone lo. Kambé italava mtsamo ashitulu kuba ba basisati ma katu mwani leti tinga bakona, na ku isha emashweni, isha ku inemashweni. Kambé ingevi ikari bula bula na umbisi, yoba ailah kutabula bula na umbis.
Uh, Chairperson Luzipo?
Mtsamo ashitulu?
Thank you, thank you Honorable Valmarans for.
Rea walebo kalelu. Valmarans, o sipinisha mudiro katoane lo?
Before I go to what will be the following process after this.
Pele kareki tuelapile roba kitla tolases togo derega, pele kase?
Let me just help on two areas.
Iriki ni kigolsha tolla ma, ma ba kahoba masilwa ma bedi?
One is to, just because we, I hope is because we didn't do that, is to clarify what is a committee of the National Assembly and how different it is from a department.
Ili kigolsha tolla oru mchumunga asera di rasewu. Omeki kichetla losova khatla tollo ba parologano ya oru na a committee ye, li committee je di we di fapanajuan.
But also how committees, how is the representation in the committees of the National Assembly?
Le oru na papani kigoro di committee, li committee ya, committee ya wo si chava, di shuma juan kuba di fapanajuan.
Then I will respond or just give clarity on certain matters that relate to the committee.
Ki talaka washa tolka di ntsage di we, je di leba ni koba di amana o le musho muwa committee.
I can't respond to your views or opinions about the bill.
Ha ke honi kuka arave la kuba washa tolla di ntsa, li ku pulo chale na ma ba pili mlaoka kanyao.
Ours is to listen from you.
Sa re na kogo telecha kore, le na di kanyo li ku pulo chale na, chale na di ri.
And then I'll explain after listening to you what then becomes the next process.
Ki tala shatola, kama ra wangele di bole di oru na kotoha mori ya kay.
The first thing, even next time when you've got public hearings, let me, let me help you.
Le kamusolele le ba le ohatati ma kabo si chava, akili tushie.
Don't waste time, just go to the, to the mic and say, me on this bill, regardless what it is, my view is one, two and three.
Re ushishamu ore, na kibonama mlaoka kanyao kan chaya pili liya bo pili liya bo ra lo kuya, kamu kikusisha kuba kibonanga kon.
Because when the committee meets and deliberate on the submissions that you have made, both orally and written submissions.
Re committee ko pana itlo bole shana le, le, ba ibole shana kati taba je, jele di bole di ngamo lomo, li jele di mwani mfas.
It will consider what you said, not what it assumes you wanted to say.
Ika skayari, ilivelele se wena, oh, ili, itlo lebelela se wena o si bole di. Isu oru ba ona ganele koro, obonya ka kore.
Let me give you an example. We've got a right, when you stand up, we don't agree with the ten percent. I don't agree with the ten percent. I believe that black people must be given twenty or thirty, that's your view, twenty to thirty percent.
Tebula ya kau wena urika au kwanili ten percenti. Homi, ukarba kayo rutusha baisha o ten percenti, oru ba twa konua, twenty percent, oru ba twa konua amagala twenty percent.
So that when we then discuss as a committee, they will check how many people said yes on ten percent, how many people said no on ten percent, yes to fifty percent. If you have not stated and you said, why are you giving, why are you giving us ten percent? We can then assume your rejection of ten percent supports a particular percentage. It must be clear that this is what you state.
He u bolela oru ka o teki ten percent. Retlo lebelela oru, kiba ba kayo baba ri kuba.
No, no, we're done, we're, we're clarifying, we're helping because we're helping for the future. No, 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 Chief, please, can you help? We, we explained, I said I'll explain how committees. Now, so, so it helps you so that in the process, we are definite of what you are saying.
Re na lebu neti wa oru li ri le onkore na kama mlaoka kanyao.
Number two, just to help.
Ya bo bedi kore kili tushie.
We are not staying in most of the places.
Ha ri dule masilo au li du lao wana.
So when we come to a place, the first point of call is the provincial legislature. It is the municipality because they are the one who will know where the venue that is suitable, they can organize.
Heri tamu eh provinci, retoma kago bole shana leba lo kaka tera milao, leba mama spala. Kago re kibonaba tahuutiba oru sonjuku ri etele si chavase, kukaay.
So we are guided by the local or district municipalities on where the venues they could they defound.
Rela olaki ba mama spala kua district ma, municipality, kibonaba tahu re sa tahu re, re konowetela kay.
On the issue of traditional leaders.
Tabeniya magoshi.
There is what is called the National House of Traditional and Coysan Leaders.
Onale, selosere sibijan sidibasabu roshi leba makoysan.
On the nineteenth of August, this bill was referred to that house of national, of the national traditional and coysan leadership.
Ka di nineteenth of August, era romela magoshi leba makoysan, ka mlaoka kanyao.
Because it's a house on its own for traditional leadership.
Kin tu kuba sidibasabu roshi se osi amana koli midiro ya magoshi.
The African culture by the way, this is where we must draw the distinction.
Resonjuku kuslo kome na oru na.
You give respect to Amakos or Hoшses by allowing them to conduct their own process.
Resonjuku sompa magoshi di siito, kore, riskera ba du melo kuba di re chabona.
The rules of parliament don't recognize structures.
Kai, lebelele di sopana.
When we come here, you are all members of the public, they are equal.
Kele itamo, le, le ba to, basi chava kuba lischaba kabobona, homelia likana.
So we can't do that and treat traditional leaders the same as all of us, which is why we take those that were elected by traditional leaders. Even when we come to a province, we take the bill and send to the provincial house of traditional leaders.
Raka skera be ra shoa na kuba ra likana, ibile raka skera shoa na kawa likana, kawa ke re na, re se ba kore. Heri kishamalaoka kwayo, ru, ru romela kuma roshi pele uka ta si chavi.
So we can't jump now as if there is no structures of traditional leaders and go to traditional leadership when there is leadership that they have elected themselves.
Raka siye magoshin, kaute, kaute, mla reti ba oru konala sidibasabu roshi, se osi melo kuma roshi, se osi chitule kubona magoshi kabobona.
Now on this thing that was raised, that you are bringing a bill that you have not discussed.
Se si kishchomosa oru re, eh, li, li bole shana kama mlaoka kwayo, wo liseloke la bole shana kawa.
The answer is simple. We can't bring something that already made our minds up on.
Raka skera kishaslo se oru naritomi la osona kadi ku pulo.
Because once we discuss it, we have to come to a decision.
Heri lutuku bole shana kayo, sonjuku talita rolo.
So the choice is go and listen first and then discuss on the basis of what people are saying.
Ar telechanin, homer tomewo bole shana, rekedi tarolo, kasewu, re bole shaning kason.
Others will be saying rapastem, something that already concluded.
Kamancha mon, retabe re, re veas tembe rodi mra sloseu, recenra bole shana kason.
Now, some of the issues that were referred, I think it's a discussion will go back ourselves. I can't answer you now. Because there are broad. Because there are pros, but also there are cons. There are issues that we may find that they are contradiction and I'll give you just few examples.
Konale dinthaje o resojungu re, reyo bulekisha na kajo na kauri mosomo konale dinthaje di tulana o omi resojukubulekisha na kajo na pili rekari mwaala.
For an example, if there is something that says which the committee must discuss, before you debate all the submissions that were made in the nine provinces, go and get expert people that can help you to tell you how much have we progressed through the NPRDA.
Pilekaha heri chata bayiri viatafli nyakubulekisha. Riyo nyakaba twa ba nenilibu honi libuzibi ba relache rebulekisha ningataba je pili rekari.
We will take that, we will take that discussion to the committee before it does.
Retachiata bayiri ishe pilekaha committee pili committee kajo la pili kataba yi.
But we will have also to say, what criteria do you use to come to a conclusion that a person is an expert?
Sesu ikuhore na pili ha kore uru mutuyo unalebu honoru unalebu zibi. Uhwi dije in kuba kin siso kapele kya kuro omushu peywa leka mutuyo ahonang kuba mutuyo analibu ipiche lo.
But the rest of the issues that you have raised are matters that they will be considered in the process of the committee engaging itself from here. When we finish Limpo Po, we'll be going to the Northern Cape. When we finish the Northern Cape, we'll be going to the Free State. When we finish the Free State, we'll be going to the Northwest. When we finish Northwest, we'll be going to Mpumalanga. The last province will be Houghtey.
Re koe tela di provinsi kamoka. Re kueje se di moso le di kipolo jale na kamoka. Ya ma fele lomo di provinsi itabeli Houghtey. Kamuka na kajo na di polelo di kaka nyo li di kipolo je re koe re di kubu kaneje flokote eve kona retoma kudi bulekisha.
Limpo Po is lucky because we are doing four areas or four districts.
Mono Limpo Po re masati kaba kala ore re sepe la ma filo kuba tikuloko ngenne.
In most cases, we do three.
Ranchiri atisha kudira fela di tikuloko kuba ma filo amararo.
Because we choose weak ends.
Ranchiri shumisha ma felelo aveke.
During the week, parliament is in session.
Mo hara beke ma, parliament de kahi shumi.
But now they, they said this is a week of committees. Hence, we chose to use four days.
Logonori le la, la le moso kore kage ilogomushu mukomunchi raketa or shumisha majati amani aveke or kela hono bulekisha na lele na.
So please bear with us. There are certain things, even organizations, there are certain things we may not agree how you run your organization. Unfortunately, we have no authority over how you run committees of parliament. It is on the rules of parliament.
Re nalame la o esipishi na le taolo le tipi sho ya di committee ka o fapa fapa na omi. Re na kare nemata au ka walekisha or lehi na kuba mehato isumisha se la tipi sho ya mukutama.
Now, for those who would not have gotten opportunity to make their views.
Ba ba sumba kona kuni chari kipolo li kaka nyo tavo na?
But also those when they came in, they may not have had clarity on the content of the bill.
Ba mkhomo basitile omora wana go kasa mahuje tya tholo tui ye kuba ikusijao ya mala kaka nyawo?
We urge you to still, whilst you are conducting public hearings.
Le kere sakala pili ka kuba noja sposichaba?
To still put your views in writing.
Le imanle di kipolo li di kaka nyo jale na li di rome.
And send them to a bossa, B-O-double-S at parliament.gov.za.
Li di romela go B-O-double-S-A?
No, 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 double S, not double S-A. Boss, not bossa.
B-O-double-S?
Yes. Or you can send them to a kotze, at parliament.gov.za.
Yehola or likuwe.
You can, you can then state what is your view. It will reach all those honorable members.
Logore di kaka nyo li di kipolo jale na diri ma ba pili mala kaka nyawo?
In English, they say the weakest ink is stronger than the strongest mind. What is written cannot be misunderstood, cannot be misunderstood by anyone because it is as you have put it in writing.
Sesu wali lo o kaskewa sena kana kati le yonika kaba kala or sesu wali lo sebulela fela seosu wetu yiro.
From here, we, when we are done all the nine provinces.
Heri feriteka di province te kamoka?
We will go meeting by area by area where we have gone, lift up all the comments that were made in relation to the bill.
Re koe wela di province kamoka omere lebelele rebulekisha le jona jeu kamuka na kajo na di tuleji mo di bulekisha ni jare na mo di provinsi.
Those are what will guide members in that committee to deliberate on what is then their proposal or their recommendations on the bill.
Seositani rasiu kometi ihonoko ba le di chishio le di peto chishio le di peto je kya kooji o kodi moga seosu wetu yiro.
Only then we can be able to say, "This one, this is what you are saying." But please, good people, a committee of parliament of the National Assembly is eleven members.
Committee ya parliament de ya eya vosichaba inalema logo alusumiswa.
From different political parties.
O twa ma, ma, ma gorong afafa faniro as politik.
Unlike a department, the department, the minister is appointed by the president.
Hari swani le, 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 goro leo ministara ache tonke mo president.
So we can't represent the executive. We represent committee, we represent parliament as a committee of parliament.
Re emela moso yaleka committee ya parliamente.
But we must explain to you what does the bill say. It's up to you then to make your own independent decision. What do you say to it?
Sarina koko sato le sathole la koro mala kaka nyawo rin logore di kipolo jale na le kusijalena iri.
So on that note, let's appreciate it. Thank you very much. I heard someone said, says that we should have, unfortunately, some of the things, this one day will get time because you can imagine some of the members in the committees are serving to more than five committees.
Le taopola koro mo committee niyera na. Omulu muwa wana ohuje mosomo adira mehato kuba adira di committee je shan.
As what committees, I mean, because that was a what committee, ma, as what committees, you have a right to say. As you bring in this bill, can you please help even now after this, when you send the correspondence, can you bring help us by ensuring that there is someone dedicated to do public education before we make any written correspondence to yourselves?
Mori kipolo le di kaka nyo jale na. Wa lango re re kope la koro committee i, i rumele mutuyo ache teho are ruta kamala kaka nyawo?
On that note, thank you very much. The session remains adjourned.
Kia leboha kuba no ito le.